I call meeting to order. Please stand for the presentation of colors by the AFJ ROTC unit NJ 782 and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is in compliance with the open public meeting law and has been duly advertised in the newspaper as an official meeting. Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Here.
Mr. McCarron?
Here.
Mrs. Barocas?
Present.
Dr. Osmond? Mrs. Rivera?
Present.
Mrs. Cass?
Present.
Mr. Palmieri?
Present. I need a motion for approval of the agenda with addendums.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barocas?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes. I now turn the meeting over to Ms. Primili for her superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Palmieri, and good evening, everyone, and thank you to our junior ROTC for presenting the colors. We are going to hear from a few of the cadets a little bit later on this evening. Looking forward to that as well. So, true to our monthly board meetings, we have our student board members here this evening to give their reports about the happenings in each of their schools, and we're going to start with Jose today from Liberty.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, Superintendent Pormili, Board of Education members and guests. It is my pleasure to be back here again to fill you in on some of the noteworthy events happening at Liberty this past month. Winter sports officially opened up their seasons and are off to a great start. The girls indoor track placed first in the spirit and distance relay as well as in the 55 meter at the Tom Trevor Icebreaker Meet. The other teams look forward to their official game starting this week, but in the meantime, there has been a great deal of talent off the courts as well. Home for the Holidays was a big hit and really set the mood for the winter season. This past week, the Jackson Liberty Choir came together with the Drama Club to deliver a captivating production of Elf, the musical. There were many who showed up to watch our gifted performers, and it was nice to see them leaving with a smile because of the uplifting show. If you didn't make it to the show, you can hope support their organization as they sell candy grams throughout the school. There has been so much to celebrate this month, and it's hard to highlight them all, but there are a few we wanted to mention. Liberty was chosen to announce Anthony Mastromarino as this year's Teacher of the Year. Additionally, Anthony Myers took home the title of Educational Service Professional of the Year. Congratulations to both of these worthy winners. Some students earn impressive honors as well. Congratulations to Queen Lynn and William Bradley on being selected Liberty's Athletes of the Month. Dylan Teopaco and Josh Capistran were also selected as Seniors of the Month. Last but not least, Ms. Catherine Ferrara was named Lion of the Month due to her arduous work for the school. Congratulations on such a remarkable achievement. This time of year is busy for everyone, and our clubs are no different. The Jackson Liberty Girls Who Code placed third in the state engineering competition for the kid win held at TCNJ. This team was the only all-female group to enter this competition and place. Great job, girls. The Leadership Academy met several times and brought the freshmen together for another activity in their classrooms in an effort to help improve the school climate. Others learned leadership skills when the AP Government class had a great day at the New Jersey State House for Model Congress. These experiences outside the classroom really helped the students connect to the subjects in a deep and meaningful way, and we are grateful for the opportunity to continue our learning beyond the walls of the school. Speaking of connecting to the community, Liberty is also very excited to contribute to the town through various outreach events. Softwares are hosting a shoe drive while the Air Force Junior ROTC is organizing a food drive and Toys for Tots. The Internet Club and the National Art Honor Society helped at the toilet event, which was held at the Jackson Senior Center, and a key club is helping with gift wrapping for those in need. Members of the NHS are writing Christmas cards and organizing a potluck for multi-language learners so that they can feel welcome in school. The Jackson Liberty Band hosted its 10th Annual Vendor and Craft Fair in addition to the fundraiser at Chick-fil-A this past week. If you are out and about at any of these events and feeling chilly, you can support our junior class by purchasing the hot chocolate they are selling. Winter break is coming fast, but we're still running full steam ahead. We are in the middle of our 12 days of holiday spirit week to help spread cheer among students. Walking down the halls of Liberty is an impressive experience between the festive outfits and all the door decorations that the homerooms are working on throughout this month. It's hard not to smile. For one final push, the Jackson Liberty Band will have its winter concert before the holidays on Thursday, December 21st. We hope to see you all there. As you can see, Liberty is buzzing with excitement and finishing 2023 off strong. We are very excited to experience challenge day this week, and know it will help lay the groundwork for an amazing kickoff to next year. I appreciate you giving me this platform to best representation of the good news circulating around Liberty. I hope all of you have a safe and happy holiday season and look forward to all we will accomplish together in 2024. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jose. Certainly a lot of things happening there at Liberty. And so from Memorial, Jamil, can you come give the report, please?
Good evening, Mrs. Pormili, members of the Central Administration Staff and Board of Education members. Thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight regarding Jackson Memorial High School. We have finally entered the holidays, and there's much to update you on. We have entered the last marking period of the first semester at Jackson Memorial High School. It is crazy to think we are already almost halfway through the year. College acceptances have continued to come in, with Jaguars seniors proud to show the true hard work and dedication does pay off. We have almost completed our holiday transition at Jackson Memorial High School. The Student Council has worked hard to create Spirit Week, which is arriving shortly. Spirit Week will include Christmas Pajama Day, Red vs. Green Day, Whiteout Day, Ski Day, and Flannel Day. Christmas movies will also be playing every day during common period in the auditorium until break. The Clue Play was a huge success, with many Jaguars showing an attendance to watch the murder mystery. On this topic, holiday musical and chorus concerts are making their seasonal debut, with performance levels expected to be at an all-time high. I am very excited to see how these turn out. Candy grams have made their way back into Jackson Memorial High School after being a huge success last year. Candy grams are special candies that Jaguars can buy for their friends, family, or significant others. Hopefully, this year I could finally get one. The Jazz Band will be playing Christmas songs in the hallways next week to get holiday spirits through the roof. I speak for everyone when I say that when we hear the jazz songs, they play nostalgic Christmas and Hanukkah songs. The band has had success in other ways as well. Three Jaguars from the band have been awarded the honor of joining the South Jersey Band Association All-Region Team. Bloom Swindle, Grace Suiki, and Nate Talan proudly represent the faces of the Jackson Memorial Band and our music department. The 782nd AFJ ROTC has set up donation boxes around the school for the Toys for Tots and non-perishable food item charities. They have encouraged students and staff to donate what they could for people in need. Winter sports have officially started, with Jaguars excited to see what each of our teams have in play this year. Hopefully, everyone has seen the independent rankings that had Jackson Memorial High School ranked number 10 in its sports program, ranked amongst more than 400 other high schools in the state of New Jersey. Most winter sports have had their first games and matches scheduled for this week or next week to carry on the amazing legacies the teams before have created. I know the boys wrestling teams had their first match on Thursday, December 13th against Tom's River South. It is a home match, my fault, December 14th, against Tom's River South. It is a home match and will be very entertaining, with the new spotlight making its first appearance. I would like to thank Mrs. Pormili and the Board of Education for your continued support, and thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. I hope we all have an amazing holiday break these next couple of weeks, and I look forward to speaking with you all next month on behalf of Jackson Memorial High School. I wish us all a happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamil, again for the comprehensive report. As you can see, there are just incredible amount of opportunities and events that happen on a daily basis in our high schools. I said it when I first came to Jackson, almost 10 years ago now. Just the amazing opportunities we have here for our students, and we are fighting every day with our budget to keep them in place. So, thank you for those wonderful reports. So, this evening, we have a few other presentations. We'll begin tonight with the June 30th, 2023 Audit Report presented by Kathy Perry from Jump Perry &amp; Company. Ms. Perry?
Good evening. My name is Kathy Perry. I'm the auditor from Jump Perry &amp; Company, the audit partner. We did the audit of the June 30th, 2023 financial statements of Jackson Board of Ed. As part of the audit, we come to the district and review purchase orders. We read board minutes. We review payroll. We review the reporting requirements that are submitted to the state. We review your grants, bids, required items on the agendas. We review student count, and in all the testing and all the documentation that was given to us and provided to us, we had no findings that you received an unmodified opinion on the three opinions that you have in your financial statements. One on the financial statements themselves. You get an opinion also on your internal controls and also on how you spent your grant funding. All of them are an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. There were no findings. All the financial statements were due December 5th, and they were all provided to the state of New Jersey and the county BA. As part of our audit, we review at the end of the year your fund balances, your budget v. actual, and review what you have available as free balance for use in your 24-25 budget, which that season will start soon. So, in that, there is very small fund balance, and we do not believe that there's anything to be used as revenue when you do your 24-25 budgets. I'm sorry. So, but we'd like to thank the Board Office that did a great job providing us everything we needed, and we thank you very much.
Are there any questions from the board?
Oh, sorry. Yes.
So, I guess, is it fair to say that the district is utilizing its money wisely, the books are clean, we just need more money?
Yes, yes. When you review your fund balance at the end of the year, which is what is left after, you know, your revenues and expenses and profit-loss, it's different in a Board of Ed. Yes, you had all of the review of your expenditures, everything signed off on, approved, you didn't overspend budget line items, the things that I expect to see, and then what happens is you look at it at the end of the year and go, okay, what do you have available for the future? And that's where the limitations come in.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on, I said we were going to hear from some cadets, and it's now that time. The junior ROTC is here this evening with Colonel Spare to present some information about their ROTC program. Come on up to the podium, please. Board members, there's a presentation, so you'll want to turn around to see the slides.
Good evening, board members. I'm Cadet John Penswater.
Good evening, board members. My name is Cadet Drew Barocas.
And tonight, our goal is to give you some insight into our program at the Memorial and Liberty High Schools in our district.
Who we are. The AFJ ROTC 782nd dates back to 1978. This program was created by Colonel Rocco P. Calasbro. The reason this program was created, it helps students develop citizens of character and to develop integrity first, service first, self the next one's only do, which is our core values. Since creation of this program, we have created many outstanding citizens of character, which allow, which have gone on to serve in our military or go on to have successful college careers and careers after that as well.
This is our mission statement, as you can see, to develop citizens of character dedicated to serving their nation and community. If you look over here, Memorial, throughout the halls, you will see pictures of people who have attended this school and served in the military, and a lot of those have passed through our ROTC program. And one of the things that we're actually looking to do this year with our Kitty Hawk, which is our honor society within our ROTC program, is to find out more information about those people, possibly get names and blurbs of their service in the military, and really expand that. So, when people walk through those halls, they don't just see names, or they don't see faces. They're able to put a story with those faces, and that's something that we think would be an incredible addition to our school.
Our chain of command. So, our chain of command, if you notice, all these names are cadets. The reason we put this up here is to understand that this unit is a cadet-run program. While we have Colonel, who's been a great teacher and also a mentor for us and helping us guidance throughout the year, all decisions that are made throughout this unit are our decisions. So, it starts at the top with our group commander, Jared Brooks, it goes all the way down to the bottom of that with Command Chief Antonio Mjolendike, and all of that, we worked the bottom of that with Command Chief Antonio Mjolendike, and all of that, we worked together to create decisions and help lead this program forward.
All right. So, what do we actually do? So, we have quite a few outreaches for our program, and one of the big ones that we stress most is community service. So, at the beginning of every year, we have to present goals that we want to hit by the end of the year, and one of them is 3,000 hours of community service this year. I think currently, we're at about 1,300 so far, heading into break, which is good, but you can always be better. And so, one of the ways that, some of the ways that we get this is marching in parades. So, we did the Tom's River Veterans Day Parade, for example. We did various color guards. Every football game at Memorial and Liberty, we did color guards, as well as doing color guards at other events. One of the things that we like to pride ourselves in especially is that not only Jackson is calling us to do color guards, we do color guards for all sorts of events, even in Howell, Tom's River, things like that, which is really incredible to have that kind of reputation outside just Jackson. We do the Toys for Tots. That's a picture up there last year. As you can see, we have Barokas there in an elf costume. I'm in a hockey jersey, and then we have Jarrett Brooks right next to us, so that was from last year, but we're running that program again, and that was one of the best programs that we have that we get to run, just because of the outreach. You get to see people personally and hand them the gifts, and that's something incredible. And then, we're running a food drive currently right now as well, that we hope to even do more of in the future. Another big part of our program is the academics. So, the way that the class is structured is an elective, and there are two courses within the class. You have a aeronautics side of the class, which is handled on Mondays and Tuesdays, and then the management side, which is Wednesdays and Thursdays. So, for example, in aeronautics this year, I believe it's about pressure, temperature, the science behind flight itself. And then, for like the management side, last year, for example, it was about personal finance and things like that, that can really help people later in their life as well as now to set up a future. And then, one of the big things we harp on in that management class is leadership. As you can see, this program is very heavy on leadership. It's cadet-run completely, so the idea of leadership is very impressed upon us and then by our staff, especially from last year. And then, one of the other big things that we like to do is field trips. Everyone loves a good field trip, and ROTC is, gives you the opportunity to go a lot of great places. Last year, we got to go to Lincoln Financial and do a tour of the Eagle Stadium, as well as doing flight simulators. We got to do an academic bowl the past two years, and this year, actually, I was part of it. They actually said, we're holding another one in December, we hope you guys come. So, things like that are just incredible. The Tunnel to Towers, we did. It was a little after the anniversary of 9/11 this year, I believe it was the 22nd, 3rd, where we get to go to New York, and they run a 5K every year, where it ends right about where the Tower Memorials are. And we have banners that we hang of people who have passed in service following the attacks on September 11th. And that event is incredible. You have all these people running this 5K, and just to be there is an incredible experience. And then, we got to go to the McGuire Air Force Base, the closest air force base, and we get to see how that functions, go on some planes there. It's a really cool experience.
Big plans for the year. So, we have many big plans for the year as we, you know, go throughout the year. So, the first one up is our Military Bowl. It's supposed to be about April 14th. What that is, is kind of like our prom, and what we get to do is girls get to wear dresses, the boys get to wear a modified version of their service dress, and we get to go and just have fun and just enjoy being around each other's company, and it's just a great, awesome event, just we get to be around each other. The next one is our First Annual ROTC Car Show, which happened around October. It was a great success. We had around 65-ish cars there, and we got only positive feedback from everybody there, and it's the first event we run, and we plan on running it again next year. Would love to have you guys out if possible. Our Unit Inspection, so this is our biggest event of the year. This is going to happen on January 12th, and what this is, is our Regional Director is going to come down and take a look at our program, our logistics, our personnel, everything that, how we tick, and just to make sure that we're doing everything we need to be successful. And the final is attending a Raiders competition, and what that means is that we have a Raiders team, which is a very physical, which is a team that attends events and does physical competitions such as ruck runs, push-up contests, and there's so much more. We've only done one last year, we'll be trying to do a bunch this year, and those are going to happen around the springtime. So, we have a lot of great events that are going to happen this year, and then we hope that will lead into next year as well, which is a very exciting time to be in ROTC.
One of the biggest events and opportunities that this program gives is the Private Pilot Academy. So, our Group Commander now, Cadet Jarrett Brooks, got to attend this last year, and the program, it's not like a guaranteed get-in, but this program gives you the opportunity to apply. And what it is, is you apply for the program. If you get it, you get to fly, you get taken out to Walla Walla, Washington, everyone's favorite town in Washington, and over there, they have a college, and they run a summer program where you can go from having very no, very little to no experience of flying to having your private pilot's license by the end of the, I believe it's two months, three months, program. So, it was, and it's in free of charge as well, which is incredible. I mean, I don't know how many of you have tried to get your private pilot's license, but the amount of money it takes to just get the opportunity to fly for a couple of hours, so to do this all free of charge was incredible, and you can see some of the pictures there. It's all he talks about now, it's getting kind of annoying, but he loved the experience. I believe Jose over there is applying for it this year. We hope he gets it. It's going to be awesome, but it's probably, it's one of the best opportunities that our program gives to the cadets that go through it.
Thank you guys for having us out tonight. It's fantastic to be here and tell you guys about our program. One last thing I'd like to mention, that I will not be wearing the elf costume again. That was a terrible decision, and I don't know why they keep talking about it.
I don't know about that. I think it was a good decision. It got people excited and ready to donate and participate. So, any comments or questions from the Board?
Thank you, guys. That was an awesome presentation, and, you know, it's exciting to have such an awesome, I'm saying awesome too, now you got me saying it, opportunity for all of our students, and, you know, thank you for sharing your excitement with us.
Of course, thank you.
Keep it up. You guys are doing a great job, and I love these presentations, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to say the same. Thank you for your leadership among the other cadets in the buildings as well, and demonstrating community service, academics being a priority. So, thank you for your leadership and everything that you do, and Colonel Spare, thank you for everything you do for this program. Again, I will say, we have many wonderful opportunities here in our high schools, and we are working hard to keep those programs even with our state cuts, and you demonstrated that again tonight. Thank you, boys.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we have reached the, about the mid-year mark in the school district, believe it or not, time flies very quickly. This is the time of the year where I give the community and the Board an update on where we're at with our goals, so I'm going to go to the podium and share some information about where we're at. So, for this evening, I will provide some information of, just a sampling of some of the things that we've done to address some of our goals. Obviously, there was a lot more that we do, but we don't want to be here all night hearing about every little aspect of what we do to address the goals, and there's lots of people behind the scenes working towards these goals. So, tonight, I'll start again, as I always start, with our mission statement. It helps drive everything that we do in this district, to have strong programs and ensure that we are working with students to create a lifelong pursuit of knowledge, and that they are developing in their abilities, higher-level thinking, independent, creative, engaging, and motivated to learn. These are our belief statements, you've seen them before, again, all working towards that mission statement to ensure that we help our students develop holistically as well-rounded students and learners and good citizens. This evening, I did want to just refresh the Board's memory of the Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs that we have focused on in the last two years. Again, last year, knowing we needed to really spend a lot of time ensuring that students were engaged and focused, and that they're feeling safe in school, and addressing some of the, you know, the issues that we saw in students returning back into the schools, with struggling, some of the things that have happened through the pandemic. We had a huge focus on that. We continue to focus on that, but now, in addition, as you see, we make our way up the hierarchy and really focus in on the self-esteem needs, self-acclarization, which is really about setting goals, working to your full ability, and pushing yourself as a learner, and prioritizing your learning based on what you see as your strengths and weaknesses in learning. So, one of our goals this year is around the physical facilities and feeling safe and connected. I will not read all of the goals to you again, you have seen them before, so I'll just, you know, pause for a moment, let you to refresh your memory about some of our security and safe goals. On the next slide, you will see again, health and safety and connection, but now on the emotional and mental health, and again, establishing relationships with students and the goals that we focus on this year. So, by way of update, you'll see here some of the things that we've done to address those goals this year. The Director of Security and the Assistant Superintendent of Operations conducted security site assessments at all 10 of our buildings in the months of September and October, debriefed with the teams, and continued to strengthen our security and safety protocols. We conducted staff training on security protocols in September at all 10 of our schools, as well as our Transportation Department, and we continue to work with our SROs on a daily basis to address any safety protocols or school district issues that we see that have arisen. And as always, we do our monthly drills, our security drills, and we do observations of lockdown. We're constantly working to always strengthen. That's not something that you can ever stop working towards, and we always do our annual trainings as well. Our anti-bullying specialists meet on a regular basis. They met in October, and again, they also attend trainings to strengthen and learn more about how they continue to be, continue to be proactive with our students. Our school climate teams do the same. They meet, they look at data, they look at areas in which they see trends of areas, whether it be around behaviors or harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and they address those, and again, work to be proactive in the approaches to reduce the amounts of behaviors that we see. And a very big initiative that we've had is the Required Policy and Regulations for School Threat Assessment Teams. In Jackson, we've been at the forefront of this, in Ocean County at least, and we see that in several of the state meetings that either Dr. Taylor, Mr. Boginsky have been in, or Mr. Palumbo, that we really have a very strong threat assessment process here, an extensive threat assessment process. In fact, other school districts have asked us for it, and we've done a lot of training around those areas last year and this year. So, by the way of Academic Growth and Rigor Goals, you'll see some of the goals listed there for this school year, primarily focused around, again, supporting students and through differentiation and addressing their needs and individual needs. Through growth and through rigor as well. And by way of update, in those two areas of academic growth and rigor, you'll see some of the things that we've been doing to address those goals. I'll just point out a few things on this slide. We have used an extended homeroom period in our middle schools. We have, we currently have an advisory period that happens in homeroom, and sometimes, it's a short period, and you can't do some extensive advisory lessons, so this year in the middle school, they have extended homeroom once per month to provide additional time for those advisory lessons. In our October 9th In-Service, we focused on professional development in the areas of MLL, which is our multiple language learners for all levels. We not only worked with our teachers, but we've also worked with our administrators on training in those areas as well this fall. And we've always focused on grade level and department articulations as well. This In-Service Day, we particularly focused in on our MLLs and also how to really strengthen and articulation around our WIN block, whatever, what I need block within our elementary So, through the school-based mental health grant that we received, we're also adopting the Multiple Tiered System of Supports platform and using that, which really takes data, student data, behavioral data, whether it be academic behavioral, and creates a team of problem-solving and decision-making to support students for that, and we will continue to do training around that this year. We are in Year Two of our Common Lunch, which provides students the opportunity to take control of their learning. This year, we are implementing a signing-in process through Genesis when they go for extra help, so we can now track the number of students who are going for extra help, who's going for extra help, and we've also put into place a protocol of making sure that parents are in the loop of when students and teachers, well, when teachers are requesting that students come for extra help in Common Lunch. And as you know, during Common Lunch, we also offer a plethora of experiences, whether it be guest speakers coming in, an opportunity to hear from college representatives or vocational representatives, and opportunities for vocational careers. So, we continue to expand those opportunities as well during Common Lunch. Again, we talk about that student learning how to prioritize and how to monitor their own learning. This is a really big part of that and learning that experience. And we continue with ongoing professional development around AI, artificial intelligence. As you know, that's a big deal. Moving forward, we'll continue to do that, and I just wanted to point out that we do have, we still have the opportunity for virtual conferences. We did do our conferences this fall, and about 80% of the parents attended those conferences. So, in the areas of rigor, we continue, although it has been challenging, you've heard me say it a few times this evening, with our budget and also with the teacher shortage for certain certified areas particularly, we are trying, working hard to maintain our various levels of courses across all disciplines in AP, as well as our electives in business, family and consumer science, technology, and the arts. We, this year, are working, Mr. Palumbo's been working with the, his guidance counselors and department staff to explore ways to expand and strengthen course offerings at our high schools for the 24-25 program of studies. And meeting with Ocean County College, we currently do have dual enrollment, but they are in AP courses, and we're looking to create opportunities for dual enrollment in more associate degree-aligned courses as well this year. And again, I'll just mention the cross-school and level teacher articulation meetings, particularly in math. We know that that's an area of challenge for us based on our test scores, so we're really vamping up the articulation and better aligning our curriculum across levels. Continued ongoing supervisory meetings with the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, Mr. Vatante, to address the needs of necessary curriculum updates in the areas of literacy and math. We're looking at adoptions based on our five-year curriculum review cycle, and this year, we're also working on our middle, a middle school committee to look at the schedule for middle school and see if there is a better way to schedule our students, to better support them, and provide ample opportunities. We continue to use our PBL model, a Problem-Based Learning Model, really actively engaging students in a process of learning and problem-solving, and again, taking responsibility for what they know and they don't know in order to solve those problems. At the elementary level, we are continuing to use Fraction Sense that we began to roll out last year, providing continued staff training on that area, again, helping students to better be prepared in math. We also use that during our WIN time in our elementary schools, and we're expanding opportunities for G and T students and Odyssey of the Mines. So, those were some areas in which we are addressing our growth and rigor with our students. In the areas of finance, facilities, and transportation, you can see some of the goals focused on this year. I'll leave that up for a few seconds for you to just refresh your memory on some of them. Okay, on updates for those areas, you will see, we continue to have discussions with the County Superintendent and providing updates of where we stand. the county superintendent and providing updates of where we stand in our budget. In fact, this week, we've had some meetings and last week as well. We spent time educating our community on the special question that was on the November ballot, provided lots of information via flyers, Q and A, presentations, individual, attending several community meetings, and we also attended the Jackson Day booth. Unfortunately, as we well know, that did not pass. We look for every grant possible. I'm sure you see it on the agendas and board members. I know you're always on the lookout as well and approving the grants for us on the agenda. We've had many grants approved over this past year and will continue to do them, just, I only, you know, listed a few there, but there's plenty more. The mental health grant and the HVAC grant that we were awarded as well. In the way of facilities, we did have a DEP project with the tanks, the fuel tanks over at the Memorial Transportation Site. It has been a long road, but we are at the end now. I know Mr. Bruno's happy about that. So those fuel tanks are in, ready to go. We're just looking for the final approval in December. We are in constant communication with the township about the opportunity they've provided for us to replace our playgrounds, which are in great need of replacement. The first proposal came in a little high, so we did a second proposal, and we have a verbal acceptance of that, and we're just waiting for the final official approval. So that's exciting as well. And as you can see with safety, right, safety is always a priority, so when safety things come up, we have to address them. These are just a few things that we've had to address thus far this year. The memorial gym floor thankfully was covered by our insurance, the, and some HVAC work. We need to have heat, obviously, and when we have an issue, we need to fix that. In the way of an update in transportation, as you well know, board, we and community, we changed the schools' start times this year, and that has always, obviously, been implemented, up and running, and these changes in times have really allowed for on-time transportation and the availability of late buses at both our middle school and high school, which we struggled with last year. So we're seeing a much better on-time arrival and dismissal time, and certainly having that availability to have buses, late buses, so students can participate in more programs is, is very important. So we're, we're pleased with that. The cul-de-sac rerouting and changes is completed. We did communicate that out last spring, and now we, we have successfully implemented it. We are looking to roll over to new software, updated software for our Transportation Department so that we can address some of the issues we've been having with the tablets and the scanning on the buses and scanning off the buses. It's because of the, the software. So that's in the works. We're looking at some training happening soon and implementation in the spring. And as you well know, we, board members, we are beginning our enrollment committee review. We have our first meeting in December. In the area of goals focused on Human Resources and Operations, you'll see some of the goals listed there. And by way of update, you will see that we do participate in a CJ Pride, which allows us the opportunity to seek out diverse candidates and also partake in some of the job fairs that, that they offer to us. And we continue to post everywhere. You've seen even some of the email blasts we put out to our community for positions that we're looking for. It's really helped us when we put things out to the community. We've received a lot of good applicants that way, people who maybe perhaps weren't aware of some job openings. We continue, you know, staffing is hard, that's for sure, and we continue to seek creative ways to recruit here. We also have approved a policy on sick leave that was required in August that expands the opportunities for staff to use their sick days for their sick children and such, or sick family members, and that was a policy and regulation that was required. So we've implemented that successfully and communicated it successfully to our staff. Also, in the area of Human Resource and Operations, this year, just in November, we have implemented a central registration process. We used to have one years ago, then it went back to the schools, and we found that we really needed to implement it again. It has been very successful thus far. It really helps to streamline the process to one area, and I want to thank Mr. Boginsky for his work in that area. It's really been, it's been going well. So in the area of goals for homeschool connection, you'll see some of the goals listed there. By way of update. So as mentioned before, we had implemented a multifaceted informational campaign for the special question. You'll see some of the things listed there that we've done. Ms. Erwin is busy collecting the data for the website survey. By the way, that closes on the 15th, so please provide your feedback to us about the website. We are looking to, to roll over a new website sometime late, late spring. And as you know, Ms. Erwin puts the slides up every board meeting. We'll continue to do that and continue to also inform our community of things happening in our schools via email blasts and other forms of communication. Those are just a few of the things that we've done to address these goals thus far this school year. We do have our board goals as well, so I'll provide an update on where we're all at there as well. So you'll see, again, behind you, a list of the goals that the board has that set, rather, sorry, in regards to fiscal areas. Curricular and extracurricular areas. And communication. As well as the progress of the board goals. Meeting one of these goals right now. And by way of update, you'll see here some of the things that the board and the district have done to address the board goals. There is a newly formed Board Advocacy Committee that has been working. They reviewed several bills, and they have reached out to other school board members to inform and discuss some of those bills, as well as writing a letter in regards to Bill A4512 to ask for some clarification on some of the things that are listed in that non-public school consortium bill. So we'll see if we hear back some information, right, Ms. Gardella, and we'll see if, if that will help us move some of the things forward. The budget process and analysis will begin with the board committees in January. The board has approved several grants, as I mentioned before, and will continue to focus on that. The board participated in educating the community in the special question, and the board enrollment committee, as I referenced before, will meet in December. The board heard the state of schools presentation in October, and the board continues to use the committee's structure and provides committee updates at the public board hearings. So well on our way of working towards achieving those, those goals for the board as well. So this does conclude the goals update. Any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Gardella?
I just wanted to reiterate that at the policy meeting, we discussed the policy 2419, which is the school threat assessment team, and I just wanted to concur that it, Jackson really doesn't have a nice protocol in place. It's something that I never saw before, and it's very impressive, and I do believe that the Jackson administration and staff is doing a very thorough job of ensuring that our students are safe throughout the school day and address both their mental health and their safety for each individual, you know, base, basis item that comes up, and I wanted to give you, you know, kudos on that. I was very impressed.
Thank you for that. I want to say kudos to my team, who have done an amazing job, and the school staff who do take them through that threat assessment process. As you saw, it's quite extensive, but important. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Can I say something else?
Of course.
To Ms. Erwin?
She's behind you.
Behind me. So I was just thinking, I don't know if this is the right place, but, you know, I was looking for an athletic calendar to download and put into my phone, and it was a challenge to find, so I didn't get to put that on my survey. Okay, good. I just wanted to let you know. Okay.
Good. Noted. All right, I'm going to return to my seat for the rest of my update. I just wanted to point out, as it's a requirement that we do approve every six months on the agenda, an update to the American Rescue Plan, the Safe Return Plan, that is tied to the SR and ARP money. Mr. Rotante has updated that plan. Again, not much has changed. It is a requirement, and I just wanted to point out to the board that it is on the agenda for approval this evening. So now onto some more fun, more interesting things than the American Rescue Plan. As you know, you heard from our high school students, December is a very busy month with festivities. There have been a lot of things happening. Some of the slides behind you this evening highlighted some of the school plays. I was able to attend Elf. It was amazing. I say it every time I see one of these high school plays. It just, the talent is amazing, and the staff that work with them are just incredible. We also did have testing happening in our high schools over last week and makeup tests as well. As you know, we work on a block schedule, so the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment was implemented in the fall block to our ninth graders, so we've completed that and wrapped that up. And in regards to some of the slides that you saw behind us, or some of the things even our high school students pointed out, we did have some Jackson Liberty Girls who code take third place in a competition at the TCNJ. That was exciting. Three of our Memorial Band students in South Jersey's Honors Band out of 600 students were selected, 15 in the county, and three of ours were selected. So that's pretty amazing. And then you also heard about the Memorial Sports being ranked in the top 10. So just amazing things and programs that we have for our students. You heard me mention the, the website survey. Please make sure you complete that by Friday. It's really helpful information for us. And another slide that you saw behind us, GETS is celebrating its 50th anniversary. It's 50 years old. So they kicked off that 50 years when they opened their doors in November with a ribbon-cutting ceremony. You saw some pictures behind me, so that really just creating like the 50th time students walked back, walked into that school. So all the students walked in together, and they were, they had the, the school colors by class, you know, they were wearing them. A couple of board members attended. It was a lovely event. And as I mentioned, December's busy. You can see behind me, the stage is set up for concerts, so lots of wonderful things happening across the district. And with that, I just want to say I wish everybody a safe and happy holiday, and that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Primili. At this time, we will go over any standing committees that met prior to this, this board meeting. Buildings and grounds, Mr. McCarron, would you report, please?
Yes, we met December, I'm sorry. We have updates for capital improvement projects in district-wide. Crawford Rodriguez, the roof ridge vent was repaired. It was missing some shingles. Rosenhour, the roof leak above kitchen was repaired. Rosenhour had an electrical panel update. All breakers have been replaced. Elms had a water pump replaced with new, for domestic water supply. Holman had new electrical supplied for copier machine in the hallway. Clayton and Memorial had a coil replaced for the gym unit for the HVAC. District, all 21 bottle filling stations have been installed throughout the entire district. For GETS, an update we have, that we're still working with Jackson Township MUA, Edwards Engineering, and Spiesel Architectural Group. As of now, we're in preliminary stages of the project. We've received approval from the DOE and are working with Edwards Engineering, the Jackson Township MUA to then prepare the work, scope and specs to put the project out for bid. Currently, the project will consist of decommissioning and removing our two well tanks that service the school and have expired their longevity use for the building. Will run 850-foot water pipe that will connect with Jackson Township's main sewer line on Patterson Road with the GETS Middle School. Checks were sent out November 30th, 2023 for application for GETS Block 2604 Lot 82-85, application for tentative approval of utility services for GETS Block 2604 Lot 82-85, application for renewal of preliminary plans for utility services for GETS Block 2604 Lot 82 to 85, and review fee for tentative preliminary final application for GETS Block 2604 Lot Memorial Fuel Depot repairs update. Independence Contractors has provided a timeline showing the progress on this project and what is anticipated ahead. Update, the concrete around the tanks was completed 12/11. The canopy installation will be completed 12/15. Stone grating and fencing will be 12/15 as well. Final inspection to be scheduled for the filing week of 12/18, and this will all be weather-dependent.
Thank you, Mr. McCarron. We also have ad hoc committees that meet as needed. The state and county school board representative is Mrs. Rivera, but that meeting is not until December 16th, so we'll report out on that in our January Board of Ed meeting. We also have some updates from our advocacy committee chairperson, Ms. Gardella?
Hi, yes. The advocacy committee collaborated together to draft or send out an email to vested legislators on Bill Number 54, A5412, which establishes a non-public school consortium to assist with non-public bus mandate for our local district. Our items in our email regarded areas that we, the committee felt were in need of review by the, the, the policy writers, including an outline of the consortium's administrative responsibilities versus the district's responsibilities, and the percentage rate of which the consortium will keep the total Aiden Lu funds from the district. We did send this out to probably about eight legislators who are vested on the bill. We didn't hear back from any, besides an auto response, unfortunately. The advocacy committee did speak, and we are going to take legislator, assemblyman, Mr. Zerwicki up on, meeting with him to discuss the school funding formula, which is something that he's pushing on the state level. So those are our next steps.
Thank you, Ms. Gardella. All right, I need a motion for approval of policy regulations. Second reading, adoption.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of policy regulations. First reading.
Motion.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the minutes. Official board meeting, November 15th, 2023, closed session meeting. Official board meeting, November 15th, 2023, committee of the whole, business meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Baracus? Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the bill list.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the Treasurers and Board Secretaries' reports.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes. I need a motion to open the public forum on agenda items only. We will hold another public forum during this meeting for other questions. This public forum will be for questions on the agenda only.
Motion.
Second.
Please sign in and state your name and whether or not you are a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on a topic until all others have been heard. Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
All in favor? Aye. I need a motion to move finance.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barocas? Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes. I need a motion to move facilities.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barocas?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes. I need a motion to move programs.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barocas?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
I need to abstain, number seven, yes to everything else.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes. I need a motion to move students.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barocas?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes. I need a motion to move personnel.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barocas? Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmeri?
Yes. I need a motion to open the public forum on any topic pertaining to the Board of Education.
Motion.
Second.
Please sign in and state your name and whether or not you are a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on a topic until all others have been heard.
Good board, y'all. Good evening. I'll try to move fast, but during the presentation, I actually heard a lot of things I want to talk about. First of all, I was really impressed that some of the items that were brought up even a couple of years ago, like the transportation cul-de-sac issue, was actually being brought up and really being resolved. So I do appreciate that things aren't just going to the wayside, they're being addressed. The transportation technology, it's a great idea because, again, I think the students realize that our technology level at our schools, at our transportation system should be at the highest level ever. And I'm glad you're addressing that, and also that the PTO is, personal time off, is being addressed as well, so that teachers can balance work-life as well. One of the things I talked about, wanted to talk about, was standardized testing, but I'm going to go through kind of my list here, and again, stop me if you want to ask questions or you need more information. Maybe some ideas to attract teachers to this town, since unfortunately, and I did vote for the increase in the budget, because I think it's important, and it wasn't a large sum of money, but it was definitely going to help us, because I've already seen the changes in my students' special events and different things being cut out. So if you take a look at the students' sports pages, you will see a lot of blank spaces there, so it's definitely having an effect, and they're starting to feel it. How about offering some new teachers discounts on their property taxes for three years? Call it a bonus. If they leave in a certain amount of time, maybe they have to pay it back, but you can bring certain people, you know, at the highest level into the town. This is a great town to live in. It's very safe, it's very, you know, family-oriented, so again, trying to get some additional people that want to move to the area, maybe the salary isn't as high as they're going to get in Bergen County or Essex, but they want a better quality of life for their families. So maybe some different ideas like that. The idea about the website, fantastic, but again, I'm going to remind everyone that students and a lot of, you know, young parents that are here are in TikTok, they're in Instagram. So my kids always remind me that Facebook and websites are for old people. So again, keep trying to use that new technology. I see someone laughing over there, because you know, you know what it's like, the young people, they're getting their information at five-minute intervals, and, but sometimes that's how you reach them. And that's unfortunately maybe why the resolution got voted down. I want to talk a little bit about the numbers before I get to the standardized testing. So according to one of the articles that I read recently, Jackson has had an 11% drop in enrollment, but a 33% state aid cut. Now, again, that could have changed, because these numbers are changing, but it seems like the direction is not linear, or it is linear, but it's not, the ratio's not the same, 11% and 33%. So certainly, we're seeing that effect, and also, we have over 5,000 out-of-district students. So that number probably is, again, even higher. So as I read these numbers, I'm sure every time I'm up here, those numbers are changing in different directions. So I want to, again, remind everyone who's listening, who's watching, that funding is the issue, and it's getting started to affect us. But I do want to celebrate our successes. I attended also the Jackson Chorus and JAA Elf Junior Winter Celebration, and it was amazing. I mean, I really couldn't believe how many talented people we have in our district who are managing that, their music, their education, a lot of them in the STEM programs. So again, what a great success to them. It was amazing, and if anyone didn't see it, please try to get a copy of it from someone, because you will be blown away. So I want to talk about standardized testing, and I don't know that change is going to happen so quickly. I think it's going to be a very slow turn of the ship, but if you look at a couple of examples, I'm going to read from the Heckenjir Report. This is from March 2022. Heckenjir is kind of a blog for education. If you don't know, that's a great report to read. Standardized tests in their current form are incredibly antiquated. That's from Alric Bozer, who's from the Center of American Progress. Okay, so I know we just finished this testing, and the reason I bring it up is I wish my son was here, but he was too tired from track practice. He was telling me the other day that the test, they had an issue, they had to retake the test again. He's missing so much class time because of the standardized testing. I don't see the benefit of it. And again, I'd like this group to look into it further. I think Mark Twain once said, you know, lies, damn lies, and statistics. So you can take these numbers and change them any way you want, but I'm sure you can talk to teachers, principals, guidance counselors, they can tell you what do students need to learn. If you're not aware, the PISA scores just came out, December 5. That's the assessment for the entire world, and of course, the US did terribly again. We're down 13%. Singapore was up 6. And that's interesting, because Randy Weingartner, who's the AFT Unit President, who in 2012 was in Singapore and loved the school, loved their system, what did she like about it? The fact that it didn't constantly do standardized testing. She said, "Stop the testing obsession. Focus on teacher training, as Finland and China do." So again, I think it's important that this group looks at another goal maybe for 2025 is, do we need to perform the standardized testing so much? The students are starting to feel it. I don't know if there's any benefit. Again, I'll take any questions if anything, I think my time's expired, but that's really why I'm here today. The standardized testing is becoming, I remember the CAT test. I took the CAT test years ago, many, many, many years ago. You're laughing, I know, it goes back forever, and we sat in rooms for four days, and the teachers prepped us on the test. My son actually said that some of the information on the test this time was not even taught to him. So what data are you getting out of that if he has poor results on a section he never was even trained on, because it's done in the middle of the year? So again, if you're looking for information, it's there. I don't think standardized testing is the way to go, and I'll yield back my time.
Thank you, and I have to tell you, I do agree with the social media use. I think you're spot on with that. The younger generation is much more engaged and active on the TikTok and everything else, so I think that is definitely something we should be looking into. And you're also spot on with the enrollment being down at 11%, and, you know, our cuts being some 38% comparably in terms of funding. And as the auditor had just spoke, you know, Jackson doesn't have, and she confirmed this, Jackson doesn't have a spending problem, they have a revenue problem. So hopefully, Ms. Gardella, working with some of our state representatives, could push this issue further. In terms of standardized testing, I'm going to defer to Ms. Primili.
Thank you, Mr. Palmeri. I also just want to comment that part of our website survey that went out is asking the question about what's the technology platform you use for that purpose, so that we can make sure that we are using the right platform. So thank you for that feedback. I do want to comment about the standardized testing. That is state-regulated. It is something we're required to do. I am sure our staff would agree that we would like to do less of it, and that the information and the timing of the test is also an issue. So for example, the fall block of testing that I just mentioned earlier for our ninth grade students is happening now, and the semester's not over yet. So sure, there's going to probably be some information that might not be covered before the end of the semester that they're being tested on. You know, we try to make sure that everything gets covered beforehand, but again, this is feedback that we continually give to the state offices, the Department of Education, so that they can hopefully hear that feedback and make some adjustments. So the standardized testing, when you're in a block schedule, sometimes can be a bit of a challenge there as well. So it is certainly something that I know Mr. Ratante works with the supervisors, the directors with, and we're constantly providing that feedback at our county meetings, that then that information gets taken to the state meetings. But we appreciate your input on it for sure tonight.
And one last thing, so I have a friend, she actually works with a Board of Education in administration in Southern Ocean County, and she said that Jackson is the model that other towns look at for their financing and their management. So she actually gave you guys kudos, because she said it's, the way you do it is unlike anyone else. So I think it definitely shows here for the town and the students. And like I said, they're amazing students, they just want to make sure that they have all the opportunities that everyone should have. Thank you.
Sir, just so you know, you can actually sign up for, New Jersey has like a state-level school board, and they send out an agenda monthly, and there are times that the public can go and comment on just like this type of board meeting. And I feel like you would probably be a great candidate if you have the time and it works with your schedule, and you can sign up. I did it personally. Yeah, you're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Comments? Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
All in favor? Aye. We will now turn with two board comments, starting with Ms. Gardella.
It's always fun to kick it off. I'm sure I'll think afterwards if something I forgot. I, you know, applaud the student liaisons, they really let us know what's happening in our student buildings, all the exciting things throughout the months, and I always like to thank the PTN at this time. I feel like they put on a lot of great events in the winter, fundraising for all of our students to participate in activities in the spring, and I wanted to say thank you. The last thing I just wanted to recognize, on the agenda, there was a parent donation of basketball uniforms to McCullough School, and I want to thank the Lowmans, that was really amazing and generous. Thank you.
Happy New Year.
I thank you everyone for attending in person and live stream. I thank you for the ROTC presentations and the student rips. Everyone have a wonderful holidays and safe holiday season.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to also thank our Air Force Junior ROTC for their wonderful presentation. I am looking forward to attending tomorrow night. I'll be with Ms. Cass, going to see the chorus at McCullough, and I'm looking forward to see many of the other band and choral concerts over the next week or so, and I'm wishing everyone a happy and healthy holidays. Thank you for attending.
Just wanted to point out, Liberty High School, I was able to go to Elf the Musical and saw the chorus choral concert before. It was a great addition to the show, and I just wanted to congratulate them on a really amazing show. We have very talented students here. Happy holidays to everybody and hope everybody has a safe New Year.
I too want to thank the ROTC. They did a wonderful presentation. As Mrs. Primili always says, we do have some amazing programs in this school, and that definitely highlighted one of them. I just think it's fabulous. I want to thank the seniors for their presentations. They do always keep us abreast of what's going on in the schools, and it's interesting to hear, and it's great to hear, to hear all the fun things that are going on. I too attended Elf, and it was amazing, it was definitely festive. The kids, the talent, just blows me away year after year. The chorus was phenomenal, they did some a cappella numbers, it was just, it was incredible. The show itself was fun, festive, just a lot of fun. So with that, I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday, a happy and safe holiday. Take care.
I'd like to take a moment and just mention that in a couple of short weeks, our Secretary to the Business Minister, Ms. Rachel Miller, will be retiring, and I wanted to thank you for your years of service and your dedication to this district. Enjoy your retirement, you deserve it. I would also like to wish everyone a very happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, and a very safe and happy New Year. Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
By acclamation. Aye.